We have Dr. Daniel Davis at the Catalina Medical Center. He will be giving us a presentation on the coronavirus. Go ahead, Dr. Davis.
Thanks for having me back. It seems like it's been years since I last spoke to the group because time seems to be on a strange time轴 right now. But I'm going to try and give you a little bit of update and perspective and maybe even prediction or at least some possibilities as to what I think might happen over the next couple of months. And then I'll hopefully have plenty of time for folks to ask questions. Okay, here we go. All right, so I'm going to briefly go over the numbers, but I'm going to pose some questions that I'm not sure anyone has answers for, but at least should make you a little bit wary depending on who you're listening to. And then reflect that back to the Catalina situation and then again, try and give you some perspective and some predictions on what we think might happen over the next few months going into 2021. All right, so here are the latest numbers. These are graphs that I've shown you before with the daily new cases on the top and the daily deaths on the bottom. So this is not cumulative. These are how many new cases and deaths are reported each day with each one of those lines representing a day. And so you probably can sense that for most of the summer, there's been some angst reflected in the press and from especially in California here over what we were calling a surge. And you can see on the right-hand side of the graph that there were quite a number of new cases and quite a number of new deaths. For those who have been following along with my previous presentations, this was not a logged graph. This was linear, so the difference between the lines is consistent. And that's important in trying to interpret these. But there's no question that if you look in the right-hand side of the graph, which represents the summertime versus the left-hand side, which represents the springtime, it seems like things were quite a bit worse, particularly with regard to new cases throughout the summer. And we're going to kind of dive deeper into that in a second. Now, one thing that I like to point out that gives me at least a little bit of confidence in these graphs is that there is a little bit of a lag about a couple of weeks between a spike in cases and a spike in deaths. And that's what you would expect because it takes several weeks for someone with contract and then becomes symptomatic from COVID to actually get sick enough to potentially die. And so you see a little humps on the top followed a couple of weeks later by humps from the bottom. And if you follow this out, you can sort of track along. And so there's definitely a relationship between spikes in new cases and then two weeks later spikes in death. That means we'll have to take these graphs seriously. But again, I'm going to ask a few questions that I'm not sure anyone has the answer for. Now, we received a request to produce some data from Catalina, and there were some concerns given that we have such a small number of cases that you could identify individuals. But I clumped them into two-week blocks just for this presentation. And you can see that Catalina's daily or in this case bi-weekly new cases follow along with what was happening in California as a whole for the most part, where there was a spike in late July, early August, and now it seems to be tapering off a little bit. So we are essentially a microcosm of the larger population in the state. Knock on wood, we have not had deaths, so we definitely don't track along with that. And let's hope that it stays that way. And I'll briefly summarize the response from the medical center. And while that's definitely my clinical home, I also am going to take some liberties in talking about the medical center as if I'm an outsider because that gives me some latitude to be able to give them compliments because I think it's been a very impressive performance from all levels at the medical center for something that nobody had any historical perspective on and that we have essentially been able to perform what everyone wished they could do, which is contact tracing and try and track down as many individuals as possible who came into contact with known COVID-positive individuals and help them isolate as best they can. And although I know that there are criticisms and concerns about whether individuals were following the guidelines the way they're supposed to, we have not seen substantial community spread, again, knock on wood, in Avalon or on the island, that most of the cases have come from outside the community. And even those that spread within the community did not lead to outbreaks like we've seen over town or even in other countries where one individual passes it on to 50 or 60 or 100 or more individuals. And so for the most part, the outbreaks, while they certainly produced a lot of anxiety, have not led to widespread dissemination of COVID. And like I said, a lot of the cases that tested positive on the island were contracted off the island. When we know about cases, they've been monitored and treated appropriately. And that involves coordination between the emergency department, depending on where the case was identified in the clinic or where the patient has become sick enough to be transferred off the island and backwards with the clinic coordinating with the emergency department to safely transfer. And that when that has occurred, the patients have been sick enough to warrant admission that not so sick that they couldn't be treated effectively and recover. And so I think from all counts, the contact tracing and then the monitoring and triaging of patients has gone exceedingly well. And again, although I've been part of that, I would point the finger at Jason and at Dr. Sikaria from UC Irvine as being the primary coordinators of that response, which I think has been fantastic. And because we have a facility that has both a hospital and a long-term care facility as well as the clinic and an emergency department all, and they're the same REIT, we prioritize keeping the long-term care residents safe. And again, knock on wood, a lot of knocking on wood tonight. They've thus far remained safe and we've been able to keep everyone sequestered. And so again, I'm very pleased and impressed as an outsider looking in with the response and as someone on the inside, it's been an incredibly rewarding experience to work with this team, which if there's a bright spot in the pandemic, it's that we really have come together as a team. Now, let's dive a little bit deeper into the data. I call that summer summary just to play on words a little bit here. And I want to try and reflect and maybe scratch my head a little bit on the disconnect between the official statistics and our clinical experience. So if we go back to our graph of daily new cases and you look at the summertime, again, represented there on the right versus the springtime represented on the far left where you see March and April. And you compare that to my favorite graph, which is the EMS medical director for Riverside County and for several of the air ambulance helicopter bases in Southern California. I get access to a whole different set of data. And we're going to compare the two because they're quite a bit different. But here you see what I call wave one, which is the initial appearance of coronavirus in California. And then there is a bit of a low, although it's not really reflected well in the graph. And then this impression that there's been a second wave that's even worse, perhaps even five to 10 times worse than wave one through most of the summer and just now starting to wane a bit. Now, compare that to my favorite graph of all, which is the influenza-like illnesses in the emergency departments and EMS calls, 911 calls. What you're seeing here is the previous year, 2018-19 season with dashed lines compared to the current season, 2019-20, in solid lines with red representing emergency department visits and blue representing EMS calls. And you see the prominent solid red peak in December, January, and early February that represents influenza itself. That was before we really saw significant coronavirus. And I know a lot of patients have come to the clinic and hospital thinking they may have had something that sounds a lot like coronavirus back in December or even back in November. But certainly in December, January, and February, none of those folks have tested positive or indicated that they had antibodies. So it looks like most of what we saw back in December, January, and February was really influenza. That started to drop away toward the end of February, beginning of March. And then you see right in the middle of the screen in solid red, the initial spike of coronavirus where we had 1,200 emergency department visits a day. And this represents Riverside County because that's where I'm a medical director. But the same data could be presented for any of the Southern California counties. And a similar hump in EMS runs down there in the solid blue at the bottom. Then a low, and then you see in June, July, and August, a hump, but a much smaller hump, about a fifth the size of what we saw in March and April. And that's really interesting because the summertime new cases of coronavirus were about five times higher than in the spring. And yet the EMS visits or EMS runs and emergency visits are about five times lower than what we saw in the spring. And so there's your flu, here's your wave one, and here's your wave two. Let's lay them on top of each other. You can see I kind of went to town with the graphs here. So now we're seeing that all the months match up here. And you see with that first spike in ED visits that correlated with a small spike in new cases. And then you can track the two little humps there in ED visits and new cases there. So they definitely match up as far as the pattern goes. And even if we look at deaths, so now I just switched over to looking at deaths, we see the same sort of overall pattern, but we still see a reversal from the summer to from the spring to the summer. And so a lot of us are scratching our heads when the numbers would indicate that things are twice as bad, five times as bad now through the summer. And yet our experience in the emergency department and the hospital and the EMS has not matched what we see with the numbers. So how do we explain this? Well, I don't want to go too deep down this rabbit hole, but clearly there is a politicization of this pandemic. And while I suspected that was already the case, I have a dear colleague who's part of the government and the public health department in Southern California who will remain nameless. But he said that the quote that everyone is citing to each other is, "Don't let a good pandemic go to waste," which is fairly black humor there because I don't know that anybody thinks the pandemic is necessarily good. But it doesn't take long. In fact, as I prepared for this lecture, the easiest slide to create was simply putting in Democrat, Republican, coronavirus. And thousands, if not tens of thousands of graphs popped up from both sides of the aisle trying to demonstrate why the other one is mishandling the pandemic. And it's really disappointing that not only is there rhetoric suggesting, and you could maybe call it constructive criticism, although I'm not sure constructive is the right word, but it seems to have spilled even into the way that we collect and report data. And so that brings up the sort of second piece of that puzzle. Is the data that we're getting actually accurate or are there incentives to over or under-report? And I think we've seen that played out in the news. And so that's why I felt that I had to find multiple sources of data to get a clear picture of what's going on. And I try and present all different types of data. But I still am scratching my head a little bit as to how the spring versus the summer is so dramatically different depending on which source of data you access. And we're going to dive deeper into that in a second. Now, one thing we have seen that's quite interesting to me is a change in the source of the cases. And specifically what I mean by that is that it appears that the United States, which is the left hand, unfortunately, this came out in the same color, but the initial spike that you see on the left represents the United States and a very early surge in COVID cases, followed by Mexico, which didn't have quite the surge, and it was delayed somewhat, which is why Mexico on the very far right there is still trailing behind the United States. I think most people suspect we probably exported it to Mexico. But once Mexico got up and running, they quickly caught up. And we saw that in our data, again, with access to data that aren't necessarily on the typical websites. But what you're seeing here is the case rate per 10,000 citizens at a point in the last month or so where you see clearly along the border, there is a surge in cases. And in fact, if you look at metro areas across the country, El Centro is number two in the country behind only Huntsville, Texas, which is smack in the middle of Texas. I'm not sure what happened there. And if you look at counties in California, Imperial County is by far the highest number of cases per thousand citizens. And I think that reflects, not surprisingly, cases coming across from Mexico, either US citizens or not. But either way, cases coming across. And in fact, for me as the medical director for the helicopters in that area, it's not an uncommon occurrence to get hooked in up in the middle of the night with a COVID patient being transferred from El Centro. And poor El Centro Hospital was so inundated, they were putting out a plea to any hospitals in California, including Central and Northern California, that would take their patients. And I like this quote, that at baseline, they might transfer a patient every other day out of their hospital and that once this pandemic got going, they were transferring a patient every two or three hours. And so I think part of what we've seen through the summer is the delay in cases that were coming from Mexico because they hit, the pandemic hit them a little bit later than it did us. And I think now they're starting to get on top of that and El Centro is starting to clear out. Now, the other interesting thing is the change in the mortality. Although you did see a spike in deaths and new cases in the summertime, there was a distinct decrease in mortality. And so I'm going to go back to these same graphs. And this is something you can do at home if you want to stay along because these are available to everyone. But if we look at these same graphs I've been looking at and we look at the fact that the spike in deaths was about two weeks behind the spike in cases, then we can look at the peak in cases in the spring, which was about 2,000 a day, and the peak in deaths in the spring, which was about 100 a day, and roughly calculate a mortality rate. Now, that's not the perfect way to do it. Epidemiologists would roll over in their graves, but it's a quick and dirty way to get a sense of what mortality looks like. And you can see that mortality early on was about 5%, which is actually the average across the world. And then when you get over to the summertime where the peak was about 10,000 patients a day and the peak in deaths gets about 200 a day, just to make the numbers easy, which equates to about a 2% death rate. So is this real? Are we really seeing that the virus or the chance of dying from the virus is going down? Or how do we explain this? I would love to be able to say that we are doing a better job treating patients, but the few sort of new therapies that you've seen hit the press have not really had the impact that could explain such a dramatic drop. Sure, remdesivir was approved somewhere in between the spring and the summer, and it's being used for most patients who have hospitalized and certainly those in the ICU with COVID. But it was actually being used long before that for most patients in Southern California as part of clinical trials. So I don't think that quite explains it. Dexamethasone or Decadron was published as a potential therapy by the Brits. And again, that had some impact on patients who were on ventilators, which was the ones that died. But again, the impact can explain such a dramatic difference. I think most people believe it probably has to do with the fact that the patients testing positive now are oftentimes minimally or completely asymptomatic. And that when you start getting a large number of asymptomatic cases, then your denominator goes up and the few deaths that occur are relatively smaller compared to the larger number of patients that are testing positive and that involves the contact tracing we talked about earlier. But the very tempting thing to talk about and to comment on this is the fact that the virus is mutating. It's supposed to mutate. That's kind of what it does. That's how it became able to infect us in the first place is that it mutated. And if we learn anything from SARS back 10, 15 years ago, we should expect that this virus is going to mutate over a period of months. And we've already been able to show that that is the case through various genetic laboratories, who is in particular that I pulled just from the last couple of days, yesterday in fact, about the Malaysians demonstrating that the strain that they have is different now than it was even just few weeks and months ago. And that particular strain, when the press gets a hold of it, loves to sensationalize it, and of course they publish it with this picture of some sort of action figure protecting a woman and her child from deadly coronavirus coming in from the right because this mutation has made it more infectious. And very deep in the article is also commentary that it's much less virulent. It doesn't tend to kill people nearly as often, but it's easier to pass around. And those two things are probably related. If you have a left-bring strain, then people are walking around who aren't really that sick or may not even realize that they're infected. And so they're able to contact 10, 20, 50, 100 people over the throats of their illness and pass it along. The virus really doesn't want to be that virulent. It doesn't want to kill us. It just wants us to have snot coming out of our noses so that we can pass it along to each other. But it doesn't really want us to be bad enough to lay in bed all day where we can't contact as many people. So the perfect virus is one that produces minimal symptoms and is easily spread, needs a few molasses and snot to make us sneeze and cough every now and then to make sure that it can be spread. But otherwise, it really doesn't want to hurt us. And that's exactly what happened with SARS. So it's possible that this would be the fate of this coronavirus. We can't necessarily plan based on an expectation that it will mutate, but it certainly is following a pathway that would suggest that it's going to continue to do so. So what should we expect heading into the fall? Will the flu season, the traditional sort of November, December through February, March, include a spike in cases? Well, we thought that there would be a break from COVID in the summer because we tend to think of coronaviruses as being primarily winter time cold viruses. And we certainly didn't see much of a temperature effect in the summer. So does that mean then there won't be an invert temperature effect in the winter? Well, the main thing that produces flu season for us is not the temperature outside directly, but the fact that when it drops to 60 degrees in California, we tend to go indoors, the kids go back to school, et cetera. And so clustering indoors will likely produce a spike in influenza as well as anticipated a spike in coronavirus, particularly for not doing the things that they're supposed to with regard to masking and hand-washing, et cetera, and maintaining some distance. And we probably will, as we have every year, see a spike in influenza. Now, maybe it won't be as bad this year because the same measures that prevent the spread of coronavirus will also prevent the spread of influenza. But the same under clustering that's developed in influenza every year would probably lead to some transmission of coronavirus as well. So I'd be surprised if we don't see some spikes as we head back indoors. It is now documented that you can have coronavirus as well as other things. That includes bacterial infections like pneumonia, but it also includes other viruses including influenza. At the very beginning, when we didn't have a test for coronavirus, we would exclude coronavirus by testing people for influenza. And if they came up positive, we said, "These symptoms are probably influenza, not coronavirus." And we probably won't be able to say that going into this group, but certainly we can test for both now. And here's the million-dollar question or billion-dollar and maybe trillion-dollar question. What about a vaccine as well? First, I'll talk about the influenza vaccine. This is probably a year, if you're on the fence, that you should just go ahead and get it. There's a lot to be needed, influenza and coronavirus together. And although, you know, the effectiveness of the influenza vaccine varies from year to year, I'm going to be first in line to get my flu shot just to take that one off the table as much as I can or certainly if I contract with influenza, minimize the symptoms. So that brings up the possibility or the horizon of coronavirus. We talked about mutations. I would love it if it mutated. A lot of vaccine-making companies would cry and, you know, who knows, maybe we wouldn't even find out. I think there's going to be a lot of push for vaccination regardless. But what about that vaccine? Well, it looks like it will, there will be something approved in that token, only because the election is at the beginning of November. I think there's a lot of pressure to get something out there, whether you agree with that or not. It's probably going to happen. And the drug companies are going in big with this one. Not only has the research gone at a blistering pace to where we have legitimately several dozen candidate vaccines using various techniques, but also focusing on that spike that we saw and read on the header slide. But the companies that own the patents for these have teamed up with the big names, the Merck's and the Pfizer's and et cetera. And they are making literally millions, tens of millions of vaccines even before they've demonstrated themselves effective or not. They're going all in with the bet being that the early small trials and the demonstration that these vaccines do produce an antibody response that looks a lot like somebody who recovered from COVID and even a T-cell response, which are the cells that essentially make the antibodies or produce the stimulus to make the antibodies, that the response looks close enough to somebody who recovered, in some cases even better, that they believe that these were right and they're going to make so many vaccines that we should be able to vaccinate a whole lot of folks very early on. I suspect we will rely on healthcare workers and people who are high-risk patients, not necessarily high-risk of getting it, but high-risk of complications if they were to get it. And so we'll probably see nursing home patients, we'll see patients who have comorbidities that would predict intubation or death. And those folks will probably have the opportunity to get vaccinated before the end of the year. And that would be an incredible feat for science to be able to pull that off, but everything seems on track. And I would be surprised if we don't start seeing widespread vaccinations before the end of the year and limited deployment, maybe even before Halloween, certainly before Thanksgiving and Christmas. Now, this vaccine will not be perfect. I can guarantee you that upfront. It looks pretty darn good in the animal studies. We don't have a lot of data from actual patients, but the antibody response makes it look pretty good. But we've never seen a perfect vaccine. And these types of viruses are tricky. And so I think we will be happy if we get anywhere above 50% effectiveness. And if we get close to 75 or 80%, that will be a heroic victory for the vaccine. Now, it may still be good enough. And there's two ways that it can be good enough. It may, even if it doesn't stop someone from getting coronavirus, it may turn it into just a little bit of a cold or even a mild flu. And if we can get enough people vaccinated, it will actually have a hard time being transmitted from person to person. If you remember, six months ago, we were hoping that there were going to be enough asymptomatic carriers that recovered and that would produce herd immunity, that is enough people that have antibodies against it from already having contracted it, that it wouldn't be able to transmit through the community. But it looks like at best, we're sitting at around 10 or so percent. And that might even be a little bit optimistic. And so I don't think we're anywhere close to the point where we're going to see herd immunity from actual contraction of coronavirus. And so the vaccine will be necessary. immunity from actual contraction of coronavirus. And so the vaccine, uh, will be necessary. The other big question mark is how long immunity will last. If you watch the, the papers and the news reports, um, you'll see that there are now a couple of patients who have had coronavirus twice. There's not a lot of detail on whether the second time through wasn't so bad compared to the first time through, but they documented that they had antibodies, they disappeared, and then they got sick again. And that unfortunately is one of the things we've come to respect with coronavirus antibodies. They don't seem to last as long as other diseases like polio. And so we likely have to get immunized, uh, on at least an annual basis. And the initial immunization involves a shot followed by another one a month later, um, just to get that initial response up and running. So this may end up being an annual kind of thing, maybe even more often than that at the beginning until it disappears from the earth, or at least we don't see significant disease anymore. You've also heard us talk about various treatments, um, remdesivir being the initial one approved, and then some other therapies, uh, like, uh, that's a methotone steroid, um, that are used for the PCC patients. The problem is that they have to be, at least the remdesivir has to be given intravenously. You've also heard things like using the blood from people who have recovered, um, and that's probably part of why they're testing when we, uh, have blood drives, to see if there are people who have antibodies that maybe could use their plasma to treat people who are just getting the disease and it, and maybe keep them from having to be intubated or even dying. Um, but again, that has to be given intravenously. And so we're really holding out for an oral agent. And there is one that I was talking about six months ago, that's gotten all the way to its final clinical trials and we'll see how it goes. Um, we're very hopeful because it appears to be well tolerated and at least in animals, is highly effective at preventing progression of disease. Um, and then you're seeing a lot of, uh, studies that are looking at existing drugs, a lot of them are either rheumatoid arthritis or malaria, which often are the same drug, interestingly, um, but repurposing those, uh, to see if they might work against coronavirus. And so there has been some small steps forward, um, but we really haven't seen, uh, the major move forward that we're waiting for. And I think the fall will probably bring us to the end of the trials that will tell us whether, uh, some of these drugs are going to be available. And that could be a game changer as well. So the combination of a vaccine and the possibility of new drugs, including oral, oral agents, uh, may make the fall and winter much more tolerable than we originally thought. All right. So here you see a soapbox, and I put my feet on it. So I'm going to give you my two cents, whether you want them or not. I've tried to sort of stay out of the political fray, um, but I know people feel strongly on both sides. So when you try and stay down the middle, uh, what ends up happening is both sides think you're favoring the other side. But that's okay. I can handle it. Um, and my impression is that we are doing okay. Uh, if I had to give us a grade, maybe a B minus or a C plus, uh, we definitely weren't as prepared as we should have been. And that is not a Republican or a Democrat failure. It is not a federal or a local government failure. That is an American failure because we feel like these things aren't supposed to happen here. Um, and, uh, and that idea of exceptionalism leads to complacency. And there is no one in public health who doesn't recognize that to some degree we got caught with our pants down and that we didn't have everything in place. And in fact, we aren't even sure who's supposed to take the lead on stuff. We know who gets blamed, but the way that public health is supposed to work is that it acts on a local level for things like pandemics. So we should see a local, and that would be a county level, um, in California, which is huge. In other states, it could be a state-wide level, public health taking a lead role on decisions about locking things down and opening things up. The federal government is supposed to focus on making sure there are ample supplies of things, making sure there's testing, which I think is one of the big failures, uh, at the federal level, and then providing scientific expertise, coordinating, and making sure that each state or, um, county has exactly what they need and playing kind of a chess game of moving resources around. Um, but that isn't something we've had to deal with before. We were largely untouched by SARS. And the last time we really had a pandemic was over a hundred years ago. And it's amazing to see how similar our response is now as it was a hundred years ago, because we were just as unprepared then as we are now. We've also seen a difference, and there's a really interesting graph that people, uh, and just that, um, that we don't really like being told what to do. And for some reason, masking has become a political statement, or I should say the lack of masking, is kind of like a don't tread on me, uh, slogan. And it's really kind of odd, because in other countries, and I get to travel around a lot, um, and lecture, and so I was able to see that at the beginning of a pandemic, a little bit of this, they actually are glad to have advice from scientific experts saying, here's what we know, here's what we think you should do. They say thank you and they go and do it, as opposed to, you can't tell us what to do, so we're going to flaunt the fact that you can't tell us what to do, and wear a mask on our chin, or hang it from our rearview mirror, I see over town here, anything but what would actually be good for the health of the individual, or certainly the people in their household. That being said, you know, it is interesting to see how quickly we adapt to the new normal, and how quickly, um, designer masks become a thing, masks with faces and mouths on them, and all sorts of interesting stuff, or even masks with political statements on them. Um, and so, uh, that's my first comment. So we're doing all right. Um, anybody who's in public health would have said we are not ready, and I think this has proved out. I don't think we realized how different Americans would react to advice. And I certainly didn't anticipate how political it would become. And maybe that should have been, um, expected in an election year. Um, I am impressed with how quickly science has stepped up. Maybe that's because I see myself as a scientist. But given that it usually takes ten plus years to create a vaccine, and we're going to be able to do it in ten, ten minus months, it is really going to be a story. And I think as we look backwards, it will be, um, the big victory, uh, of this pandemic, if quickly we're able to respond to it. And again, I'm going to take the liberty on my soapbox to pat, uh, the medical center on its back, uh, because we really have served a role as a public health entity as well, the medical facility, um, and the team that's come together, uh, particularly the leadership. So the last little piece, when I went back to the very first presentation I gave, the beginning of March, I found exactly the same lessons, with one exception at the bottom here, I'll show you. You know, this is what I said back in March, this is a critical point, because we don't know what's going to happen with the flu season, and we don't know for sure that we'll have a vaccine or a therapy. So this is the point where I would say hang in there another couple of months, and I'm hopeful that this will be, um, on its heels and we'll be able to start moving out of this whole thing. But don't use this point to become complacent. We have a lot of vulnerable people. And as I've started working in primary care here, I had no idea how many folks are in the community with diabetes and hypertension and a history of heart disease and a history of lung disease. And certainly I probably could have predicted some of the, uh, obesity. But, uh, nevertheless, there are a lot of folks here, and they live with folks who are out there working two or three jobs, that are in contact with folks who are testing positive. And that's what I just don't want to see, is somebody who doesn't realize that they have symptoms, they're hanging out with someone, they realize they're having symptoms, and they come back and bring it to their father or mother, grandmother, grandfather or grandmother. And so you really have to hang in there, and there is an end in sight. So try and work with us. Again, you know, work with the hospital. We've tried to be flexible. We've really gone out of our way to try and make sure we can do the best testing available. And we probably have better testing than most university hospitals over town right now. Um, check the website, you have patient, patient. Um, and the last thing, the only thing I added to this slide was to support the medical center and each other through this. Um, now it's natural that people when they're anxious, um, start to look at the behavior of others, and if it's different, um, criticize them, either because they think they're not taking it seriously enough, or because they're taking it too seriously. Um, but realize that everyone's fighting their own battle here, that people are doing things for different reasons. Um, but, uh, you can always take care of yourself. And I stay with my, my contention that with my fifteen hundred paramedics and EMTs and my fifteen hundred flight crews across the country, by just simply wearing masks and washing their hands and doing the steps they're supposed to do, we haven't, knock on wood, again, had a single transmission from a patient to one of our workers. And so I've been, I heard someone make the comment about that they weren't sure whether masks do or don't work. And certainly not all masks are the same, that is definitely true. Um, but all of them do something. And as you get to things like three ply of, of material, they come pretty darn close to the masks, uh, that we're using on the front lines, what our faces are like, the face of someone coughing and their chicken tubes down their throat, et cetera. So I'm off my soapbox, and now I'm happy to answer questions. Hopefully I'll be able to hear them, or you can read them or repeat them. Um, but again, thank you for inviting me back and for your attention. And, uh, hang in there, because that's important.
Well, thank you. And you know you're welcome to come back anytime. I get nothing but accolades off, off of the good information that you send. And Michael, do we have anybody that's called in?
I don't.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um, probably, uh, I don't know who better, Jason or Dr. Davis, but, um, could you just reiterate for the public who's watching about, um, what the numbers, the testing numbers here on Catalina, being only those that have been tested here, and not residents here that are tested on the mainland?
Um, Jason, Jason is the one who enters the data in. And, um, even the, the cases that I'm aware of have also received tests here, if only because at the beginning, we were trying to, um, prove that people were no longer infectious. And that was before we realized that, um, people from their tests positive for months and months. So even folks that, um, were essentially diagnosed off the island had positive tests here. Um, and so I don't know, if, if somebody were treated by our providers here that had a positive test from elsewhere, uh, I'm not sure how many of those folks there are. And Jason would probably be the one to answer whether, um, we would note those folks anywhere. But my impression is that we're only posting the patients in whom we have a confirmatory positive test, but with the knowledge that we may test some of those folks, even if they had a, uh, an initial test out there. I don't know if Jason is anywhere nearby that he wants to come in.
Yeah. So the data that we supply, we only have knowledge of the, of the patients that receive tests from Catalina Island Medical Center. If you go over town, we do not under, we don't have any knowledge of that data, or what's, what the results are, or anything. So, um, and I would also like to say that the turnaround time for testing has vastly improved. Uh, so there really is no reason to go over town to receive testing, because we can provide it rapidly. And, you know, your ability to pay doesn't matter.
Right. Good classic. Go ahead.
And we will certainly take care of it.
The other one was, I, I've seen some threads on this, and honestly, it just gets so nasty on Facebook that I don't read all the comments anymore when it starts to go downhill. But there's a difference between, um, reporting tests that have come back positive, and there's a lot of reasons in HIPAA reasons why you can't report active cases versus, uh, recovered cases. Can you just re-explain why we don't do that? And
Right.
I think you've answered it online, so I apologize if you have, but...
As far as HIPAA covers, it doesn't matter as to whether we're releasing a patient name or not releasing a patient name. Let's take, for example, uh, if you had coronavirus, and you said, oh, you went on Facebook and said, I have coronavirus. And then, uh, two weeks down the road, we tested you and we saw that you had antibodies, and we were, you know, let's say we were going to post that you're now cured. Well, we're announcing to everybody that Cindy is cured. So we're providing medical information that somebody can put one plus one and figure out what your medical condition is. And that is not our role to inform the community about individuals. And so it sets us up for a liability. It sets, you know, firstly from fines and penalties from the federal and the state government, but it also sets us up with, uh, legal liability with a possible lawsuit from you.
And, and I guess just to further discuss that, the way that I've seen it, for example, um, Johns Hopkins and the LA County sites and some others, it's not necessarily saying, um, recovered. It's, it's listing, these are the number of, these are the number of positive cases. And unfortunately, there's another column of, of those that we've lost due to the virus. So I, I think it's, the question keeps getting asked over and over, why can't we, why can't we do that? But it, but that's not, the recovery number is not a separate column anywhere that I've seen on any other county statistics or whatnot.
And then, you know, how, how can you necessarily tell if someone's fully recovered? I mean, if you've had the coronavirus and three weeks later, you're still shedding those cells. And if we tested you for coronavirus, you'd test positive. So, you know, there's, there's just a lot of leeway in this whole thing. Um, and there is a vast difference between the data that Johns Hopkins produces compared to us. Because we are rural, we have to be more careful about the data that we put out there, um, due to the fact that we have small numbers. And it's easy to figure out what's going on. Oh, Cindy hasn't come out of her house in three days. You know, you've seen this within the community, that people trying to figure it out. I mean, and I, the reason why I want to keep the data the way it is, is because of some of the plus, some of the things I've seen on Facebook, where the community is taking the data. So a number of weeks ago, we had a day where it went up by three. And at the exact same time, the city closed the summer camp. And then people were posting online that, um, that three children were testing positive of COVID, which is completely inaccurate. And so then, if I hop on and say that is inaccurate, you can't, that information is incorrect, well then, when somebody puts something then out there, and I don't say that's inaccurate, I'm virtually saying you're correct with your hypothesis. Now, I want to just stop the rumors and the finger pointing with who has, who has had COVID and who has gotten, oh, you know, who's cured from it. Um, it's none of our business. Just wear a mask, stay outdoors, don't go indoors without a mask and spend a lot of time with a whole bunch of people indoors. You pretty much aren't going to get it.
Yeah. And I, and I would, I would underscore that point, but I would also kind of thank the community, because we are not a public health, we have no public health jurisdiction. We are performing this, these, this contact tracing function only on the goodness of the hearts of people who have tested positive, being willing to talk to people around them, whether it's their boss, their family, their friends, and have other people come in to get tested. And we, as a medical center, were able to absorb, you know, literally hundreds of tests in a matter of a day or two. But that wasn't us going out and saying, hey, one of your employees tested positive, you need to send all your employees to us. It was completely the other way around, because we're not allowed to do that. And so all we can say is when somebody tests positive, encourage them for the sake of the health of the community and to those around them and those they work with, to let people know. And that, as I said at the beginning, we have been able to stop these let people know and that, as I said at the beginning, we have been able to stop these little miniature outbreaks from becoming big deals. And that for the most part, it's just a handful of folks and they're people that they're very close to that have tested positive and then it stops. And that's much more effective than what's happened on the mainland where public health is able to perform that function and go track people down. And we've been able to do it without that kind of jurisdiction. So I think that's not just tooting the horn of the medical center, it's really more a reflection of the community being as willing despite what's posted on Facebook, despite the possibility that they're going to be ostracized or feel like, you know, there's a red letter on their front door now for COVID. Despite all of that, we've been able to do contact tracing on the goodness of everyone's heart and really, you know, perform the kind of public health that every other community in this country wishes they could perform. So despite that it's disheartening to see the rhetoric online, I think we should step back and look at the 10,000-foot view and say, there's probably not another community that could pull this off. And so this has been a tremendous victory, even if there is some expected, you know, infighting and finger pointing and, you know, people are nervous and anxious and they're gonna, you know, look for someone to blame and they're gonna be upset when they think things don't go the way they're supposed to. But for the most part, knock on wood, up until now, the first six months, this has gone amazingly well.
And since I've isolated Cindy with all my examples, I just want to put out there, I have absolutely no knowledge as to whether she has COVID or not.
So Dr. Davis, I just wanted to make a comment. You were asking early on about, you know, how the numbers, when they, early on the death rate was like at 5% and now the death rate is like 2%, right?
Right.
So, but at the beginning of this whole thing, weren't the institutional agencies, like all the nursing homes, those really got hit hard at first and they were wiping out hundreds of seniors, it seems like, and maybe that has gotten better over time?
Yeah, that's a really good point, that the epidemiology of cases has changed. Now, the first, I mean, the first cases in the United States were up in Washington in a nursing home. So nursing homes in particular were, seemed to be vulnerable in part because the people there have a lot of comorbidities and in part because they're packed in and they really can't get away. So I think you're, that there's a part of that that's true. But those numbers, 5%, 2%, if you ask, you know, the epidemiologists on the front lines, what the likelihood of someone, whether they're in the nursing home or whether they work in a restaurant on Catalina Island, you know, all comers, the likelihood that they would die from coronavirus, the most current estimate is only about 0.1% or 0.2%. And that's because we probably haven't even scratched the surface on the number of people who have actually been exposed to the virus and had sort of an asymptomatic course or a minimally symptomatic course. And I think we've seen a number of folks on the island surprised that they tested positive because they were tested only because they worked with someone or they were in the household of someone with coronavirus and so they went and got tested like they were supposed to and then they end up positive and it's kind of a, really? I can't believe it. You know, yeah, maybe I had a little bit of a stuffy nose, but I thought it was seasonal allergies, not coronavirus. And so, you know, I think there's a lot more of those than we realize and that the biggest reason we've seen the mortality drop is just because we're testing all of these folks who had minimal or no symptoms. But I think that you're absolutely correct that just by virtue of where the patients came from, the initial wave was in nursing homes with really sick people and now, you know, if you follow the press, it's in bars and concerts where young people are partying and they're very low risk and so they're not likely to get it. So, yeah, so I think that's another variable that I didn't even talk about tonight, but I really hope that the thing is mutating and that we're seeing a less virulent strain as well. And that's what, if you remember from my July, I think it was presentation, the head of infectious disease in Italy came out strongly and said, this is not the same virus we saw even two months ago. And the World Health Organization quickly slapped him down and said, don't say that, it's going to make people complacent. But he said, you know, I want to give people hope and I want to be scientifically accurate that this is not the same virus. You may not want to hear that, it may not be part of your messaging, but the truth is the truth and I'm going to say it whether you like it or not. It led to a little bit of a kerfluffle in Italy.
Is there, did anybody call in, Mr. Palmer?
I don't have any comments.
Counsel or staff?
Dr. Davis, can you just speak, there's been an increase, it sounds like, in people who have recovered from having coronavirus, at least the first strain of it, and having some fairly significant after effects long after they've no longer tested positive. Can you speak to any of that?
Absolutely, yeah. So one of the side effects of me being involved in this is that I was asked to author an online educational module for physicians, nurses, nurse practitioners. And so I'm wading deep in the literature on coronavirus and one of the new modules we released are the long-term sequelae. And immediately there was a pushback to say, how can you call it long-term? We're only four to six months into this. So with that as the caveat, we don't really know long-term. But the way that I've tried to describe it is that what we're doing right now is we're trying to understand what coronavirus does in the context of other diseases that we know and we know well, like stroke, for example. So if coronavirus activates your clotting system and makes you more prone to having heart attacks and strokes, well, there's no reason to suspect that the long-term sequelae from a stroke due to coronavirus is any different from a stroke due to atherosclerotic disease and hypertension. So we know some of the long-term sequelae are going to be the same as the diseases that just weren't caused by coronavirus, but ultimately end you up in the same place. And the majority of the sequelae fall into that category. Now there are some weird neurologic ones that we're just trying to understand, but at the risk of insulting the neurologists, and I think there is actually one that lives on the island who's been very complimentary up until now, probably not anymore. But there's a lot of neurologic diseases that we don't understand very well that probably involve autoimmune phenomenon to your body's antibodies attacking your own, you know, components of your nervous system, that they often carry names like Guillain-Barre or even things like Alzheimer's and Parkinson's, but that we don't fully understand the immune response. And it looks like coronavirus is going to do a whole lot of that kind of stuff where it can attack any part of your nervous system, the brain, all the way down through the spinal cord and out to the nerves. And we're just now seeing these things start to manifest and in fact, one of my closest colleague's son, who's an intensivist, seems to be fighting some kind of a peripheral neuropathy that's partially paralyzed his diaphragm, that we're all thinking is coronavirus, but they're having a hard time proving. And so there's a lot of these sort of mystery cases that are associated with coronavirus infection that look a little bit like diseases that we've seen before, but we really don't know what the long-term outcome is going to be. But for the most part, the side effects or the sequelae look like diseases that we know well, but that includes heart attacks, strokes, blood clots in the legs that shoot out to the lungs, the scarring that we see in the lungs after you've had bad ARDS and other forms of pneumonia. And so that's going to be the majority. Now, some hospitals have opened up coronavirus sequelae clinics and so the question is, do you really need a specialist in just coronavirus sequelae, given that these look like other diseases and we suspect it's probably more of a marketing ploy than anything else. But there are some weird ones that we haven't seen before, but you can count those on your hands and toes and that the majority of things look like other diseases that we know pretty well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there's no further questions, thanks again, Dr. Davis, and I hope to hear from you again soon.